Everyone rise please. Robbie, will you do the prayer for us?
Let's pray. Most kind gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for this day and all the blessings of life, God, that you bestow upon us all. God, we just pray that you be with his commission as they go forward in doing the business in which they've been elected to do. I pray, God, that we always keep our eyes focused on you, preaching your son, Jesus Christ. In the name I pray. Amen.
Jeremy?
Yes, ma'am.
Read us a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Here.
Debbie Davis?
Here.
Daniel Deal. Dewey Esponos?
Here.
Mark Evans?
Here.
Jeremy Kimsey?
Here.
John Pippinger?
Here.
Samantha Trantham?
Here.
Approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion to approve all minutes of previous meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal. Dewey Esponos?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Okay, we have, uh... No, so number three will be approval of reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Esponos?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
We have two nodaries, um, up for... One of them is Cheryl Ann Miller, Datetown, Tennessee. And I guess, well, we need to do one at a time, so...
You can do these together.
You want to do them together?
Unless there's a challenge, you can do them.
Okay. And then the other one is, um, Denise Loudermilk, Turtle Town. Is the other one up? So is there any discussion on either one of those? Do we need to separate them? Are we good to vote on them at one?
Making motion to approve both of them.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Okay, roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Esponos?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
All right. Budget amendments.
Oh, we got... Same body.
Here's my name again.
Okay, one of the amendments is for the, um... For the Sheriff's Department, it is, um, for the locks. Forty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the other one is...
Just write this down.
The other one is... Catrice. Co-building workers' comp, county building workers' comp, general administration, legal fees, seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and legal fees, a thousand. Comes to a total of eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Any discussion?
I don't remember whatever that was.
Okay. Uh, data processing. Eight hundred and ninety dollars. Randy Yates' office, is this correct, Catrice?
Yes.
Okay. And then... This other fourteen hundred and fifty dollars, what is this?
Now, that's just a show.
Okay.
Eight hundred from one of them.
Got it. Okay, got you.
Now, is that on, uh, uh, membership and dues?
It is.
That's the one we set everybody at the same amount in the budget. His dues are higher, but we set everybody... How much did we set him at? Five hundred and...
Five sixty.
Five hundred and sixty dollars. We set everybody at five sixty in that line. And number nine, is it, uh... Can it not be pulled from that account that we talked about today? Or was that strictly court, on the upper side of the courtroom, not in the jail? Any idea?
Talking about number nine, for sure?
Yeah.
Well, we agreed back in, uh, May twenty-third that we would take the first part of it out of the undesignated funds at that time, and then it'd be, uh... In this budget, we'd take the remainder out of undesignated funds when the job was complete.
Well, we got another fund that we may can take it out of, keep hitting the undesignated fund balance.
That's why I was asking, though, with... Trace, is that within the, uh...
Either way, it still get paid, just like we agreed on, but we may can take it out of this other one, that taking out the fund balance.
I know it's courtroom...
I feel like we had discussion on that.
Because it's not in the court area. It's in the back, right?
What... I don't know what those logs are. Pulling them in, Doc?
They're in the... They're the jail logs. They're the... They're the containment units. The sales.
Oh, yeah.
So we can't take it out? Okay.
So it's just... So it's these three, then, that we've got, correct? Okay. Motion?
I make a motion to approve number nine and number ten.
Got a motion on number nine and number ten to be approved?
My second. And whatever one is hanging off tonight, right?
Yep. On the data processing, whatever it is.
Well, I'd, uh... I'd talk to sheriff about, about his, uh... About this forty-two thousand, and, uh... He was mainly wanting to be sure that he had it approved, that when it was completed, that he'd be able to go ahead and pay it without having to come back, get it done later. And we had... That's what we, uh... Like I said, May twenty-third, that's what we said then, that the balance would be paid upon completion. And that'd make sure we get them, keep working and get it done, you know, for him, so... He just wanted it be ready to go.
Okay, well, we've got a motion, um...
Number nine and number ten.
On number nine and number ten, which will... That is included. Uh... Motion made by Pippinger, and was it second?
Yep. Dewey, do you think it's...
All right. We got any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal? Dewey Esponos?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Update on the county budget. Pippinger.
Let's see. In the package, you should have received a letter. It's just, uh... I just need a, uh... Motion to accept that you have been notified the state of Tennessee has approved our current budget for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The letter should have been in your package.
I was skipping legislature number eleven.
I was just looking at that. That's, uh, seven hundred... Does that say seven hundred thousand on eleven?
No. No. The Sessors' office...
Line that... Line that'll change.
Okay, this is...
We got one from the road department, too.
Yeah. Eleven-two of nineteen's one for seven hundred thousand.
First deal one from the road department, one for the property Sessors' office. Don't do these things again.
You can't do a road department, um...
What do you want to do first?
I make a motion to approve eleven-one of nineteen from road department, eleven-two of nineteen from the road department.
Eleven-one, eleven-nineteen.
Thirty-nine thousand. My second.
Okay, one of them... Okay, this... What is this, uh, now?
Seven hundred thousand from the note, it's a, uh...
Eleven-one capital outlay note.
Okay.
Moves it to proceeds.
This is the capital outlay note for seven hundred thousand, and the other one is, uh... Yes... Overages, to prevent overages in expenditure on asphalt, rentals, lubricates, vehicle, and equipment, and it comes up to ninety-six thousand five hundred.
Roy Jean, is he still here? Where you at? Question on number two, eleven-two. You've got the same line number on the proceeds and expenditures.
That was, uh, big done by the auditor. They recommended for those funds to be noted in proceeds and going into expenditures where it needs noted for the books.
Under the same line number?
Yes.
So there's actually no...
Since we've got that money, it has to be done as a budget amendment, put that in that line.
Right before's it? Before's your originating the line number, right? And it's going into forty-nine-two-hundred?
Yeah. It thinks that they cut it in there. Money has been received in, but when you have that in the budget, it doesn't get cut at the budget.
So it's just fell in, and you just need to show, uh... Trace. And the eleven-one, that is from your undesignated fund balance? Thirty-nine thousand? One for thirty-one, I'm assuming.
Yes, more, Mr. Todd, left is four thirty-four.
I made a motion for eleven-one and eleven-two of nineteen from road department.
Did... We've got a motion by Pippinger, we got a second by anyone?
Yeah, Dewey.
Dewey. All right. Motion by Pippinger, second. By Dewey, any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Esponos?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Okay, we've got a, uh, a road closure.
We got one more budget.
Oh, we got another one. That's seven hundred thousand, but not right. Ah, on number, uh... Eleven-three...
No, we got nine. We got nine ten, this is...
Wherever it is. Okay. And that's... Well, I read this one ago.
You did, but nobody made a motion on it.
Okay. Totally crazy. Okay. Data processing. This is number eleven, uh, from Randy Yates' office, for eight hundred and ninety dollars.
And it's going into, uh, dues and memberships line, I believe.
Coming from the data processing line, going into dues and memberships.
Going into the...
Dues and membership.
Dues and membership. Okay.
Make a motion for the second one.
Any more discussion?
No, again, though, we, we set the dues and memberships at the first year in the budget at five hundred and something dollars for everybody except, uh, election commission. I think, uh, I think I made a motion, we cut the, the commissions, dues and memberships completely out, didn't we, Catrice?
Yeah, there's just five taken there across the board, except the election commission. County executive and county commissioners always been paid together under the same line. It always looks like three thousand something dollars, they got that to five sixty as well.
Well, then you leave it at five sixty, like we decided, or...
But they're two are the only ones that are more than everyone else's.
So when we was doing the budget, five sixty's what we put in this line, too?
It is.
Five sixty paid for the code for everyone else.
You got a motion second? No, I think you got second.
You just moving money from one end of office to the other.
Right.
Not taking... It's not asking us for it.
Nope.
But if it comes short in this other line, we'll take it from, for the budget years old, it's the same principle.
You can deal with that when it comes up, and if it does.
It's not due at time. I mean, if it comes up short somewhere.
Okay. Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Esponos?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
No.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Okay. Got all different versions. Okay. Nine. On the road closure issue, uh, there is a, I think of Mr. Mullins, that is here tonight to discuss a, uh... A road that is... May be a private road, may be a county road, may be a right-of-way. We don't really know what it is, and it's probably not going to be for us to make any decisions on, but we will hear it real quick and see if we can make any suggestions or not suggestions, and, uh... So if Roy Jean is also here, so he'll be able to shed light on it.
Mr. Lee's here, he's talking.
Okay. Everybody that's lives on that road, I don't know who else here and who all ain't here, but, uh, I'm thinking this is probably... We're not judging juries, so I'm thinking that this is probably not us. So, but, uh... Mr. Mullins was the one that called me, uh, that's what got it on here, so if you want to speak, uh, real... We don't have a lot of time for everybody to get into a long drawled-out situation, so... But if you will kind of open the door here and tell us what's going on.
Okay. The, uh... Here is a couple papers, one's a flatback, shows a road coming up, busted rock road, and where the gate and stuff is. This is a notation where it's listed in the county records for a road petition to be closed in forty-five, and apparently it was approved because there was a metal gate put up at the, uh, start of the road from busted rock road going down to it. Now, whenever we bought the property in two thousand and two, there was a lot of trash and stuff there, and a lot of traffic in and out. We had people eating the big cans and tabs and bottles, and what really set it off was we found a needle down there, where somebody shot up and put it down on the ground. And so we talked to other landowners at that time, and we moved that gate from the start of the road up there down onto my property, and we started locking it because that limited the vehicle traffic in there. And that was... We did that in about two thousand and five, and did not have any problem with... There is most problem with traffic in and out and et cetera, uh, you know. Now, this last year, apparently there was a flare-up, and I don't know why, but I got a call from somebody that stated they were Captain Fields from the Sheriff's Department, telling me I'd have to leave the gate open or I was subject to arrest. And so, being the good citizen that I am, I thought, oh, there was, then turned over to the road commissioner, he'll take care of it, we'll hear something. And this was about... This was the first of May, it was about the fourth of May that I got this call. I talked to Mr. Thompson a couple of times on the phone. I talked to him once personally. Nothing's been done, so what I need is clarification. Is this going to be opened back up, or is it going to remain closed? You know, if it's going to remain closed, I'm going to lock the gate back up, give everybody a key that needs it, and we'll go from there.
We've been put this before on some of the road, and, I mean, basically, every landowner beyond the gate has to agree to it. If they don't all agree to it, we done this over and leaves there with, uh... What's the guy used on Ford dealership, uh, playing?
Cars.
Cars. I think it's his grandson?
Yes.
And, uh... But every property owner beyond the gate has to be in agreement.
Well, the road was closed in nineteen forty-five.
But whose road is it then?
So it's a private drive, more or less, subject to the landowner. The county hasn't maintained it since...
No. If the road was closed, and, uh... And it is a private drive, if that's true, then every property owner past that gate has to say it's okay to put up a gate, because that's their roadway, their property.
At the time, they did.
It don't matter.
But when we did the gate, all the property owners did agree.
But if they don't agree, then we can go back like it was. But everybody's got to stay in agreement.
Okay.
They blocking somebody's.
Okay. So the property owner, and we're in agreement with it.
Is there any more property besides y'all's, too?
Yes, I'm property there.
Are you in agreement?
I am not in agreement with it. It became very confrontational at his gate when we were being locked in and locked out, and that's... I was the one that called, Steve Rouse. My son farms, what we call the island that we bought from the Radcliffes. Most of our properties are all open to the public. We bought the W.I. Davis Farm, where we have created a baptismal pool, and, uh, when this property's come up for auction, what I'm calling the islands and the other properties we bought from its access point, my wife and I, this is a beautiful wife, this lived it forty-eight years, and, um, we do a lot of work with youth from both churches, your local one, your old club, the YMCA. So when this property became available, uh, we, uh, you know, at auction, bought the island, and then later on, misracked this onto another tract of property on, um... That joins Parks Mill Road at the end of the road. So we were being locked in and locked out.
Well, let me just... Let me ask you this real quick, because it, like I say, this, this sounds like this is going to be way above us. But, uh... We'll get it for Roy Jean right after I make this little statement. I don't know whether you're wanting it took over as a county road?
We have... This is George McCoyn, local attorney with the state. When... I try not to operate off an opinion and emotions when it gets in trouble. So when it became an issue, I turned to Mr. McCoyn to start the research. Multiple items that he has found, such as there's a public water main through the middle of that road, which has no easements registered, so it shows it is on public property. The deed when the Patterson Farm, and we had made a booklet, and I, for... To look at with photographs of the different items and the deeds, all the deeds called for one of the boundaries to be Parks Mill Road. So when you have all your coordinates in your surveys, when this was subdivided, that when Mr. Mullins bought his and others, and when I bought mine, all of the deeds reference that road, because I think you have to touch a county road, there's something... You may want to explain, but we, we certainly went to the tax office here. It is not taxed, the fifty-foot right-of-way all the way through there, so they were pretty certain that the county owns that road. Now, whether the county road department, they haven't maintained it, but whether they're required to or not, I'm not sure of that, but I'm certain that the county owns that fifty-foot right-of-way.
It may own the right-of-way, but if, if, if the road was took off the county road list, then, uh, there's just been a lag of getting it back on the, uh...
And I don't know that, but we don't have any records that we have seen of it being taken off of the road list.
It's not on the current... It's not on the current county road.
Roy and I have talked about this at length. It possibly could be Upper River Road. The name changed at times. This thing's very lengthy, but, you know, you had the Parks Mill, there was a mill there, so we know it's been public access for many years. The fact that the Ocoy Utility District does not have an easement through there also shows the water main goes, uh, from busted rock road all the way through the middle of Parks Mill Road under the river in two points, because they had to refurbish the tank at it this year. The other thing that I've talked with is the nine-one-one center, and we had a... We had a young man that was struck by lightning there this year, and he didn't know where to come on farms. So what we have done is coordinated with them, and there will be... We have put nine-one-one center posts at gates of these farms and located with them, and one of them being at the end of Parks Mill Road, where we own the island and the other properties that we bought there. other properties that we bought there. If an accident happens on a farm, it's hard for them to find you, and that's what happened to this young man that got struck by lightning. Then you busted rock road, but they didn't know where to come. So the same way with what we're seeing as Parks Mill Road, and there will also be one there, it has a designated place, and so safety becomes a big issue too, when you've got something blocked off, and you've got kids that are either hunting, fishing, or four-wheeling, we've had two kids down there hurt with four-wheelers, and so you need a location point to come to them. And maybe Mr. McCoyn could, I'm not trying to be a realtor, he and I have discussed this, but maybe George could shed a little bit of light with you quickly on what it takes to close a road officially in state statute.
That's up to the commission, whatever you all wish to hear, I understand you wanted to keep it quick.
Yeah.
But I would suggest that if a public road is, still a public road, the process hasn't been followed, county may choose to not maintain it, but that's the county's choice, whether they want to maintain it or not, but that doesn't.
I understand it was taken off the road list officially.
I'm not arguing about that tonight, so I haven't had a chance to look at those, and there's a process to go through, and the records show that, and what the records indicate, but even with that, road's been used continuously by the public, and even if it has been taken off, that still does not mean one has a right to put a gate on it and cut off out of land usage, that's a different question, and it's one that would not be forty while you're there about having to factor that.
Yeah.
I think the bottom line is, back to our rule as far as any authority we have, is if, if every landowner beyond the gate is not in agreement, then our hands are tied, because we running the same thing already, and I believe that's where it would be in as far as us, and anything above and beyond us saying that, I guess civil, but that'd be our final, as far as we can go with our final say-so.
Yeah, we just, you know, it's just, we just don't have the authority, the only authority that I think that we might have is if y'all settle this in court, out of court, or however y'all settle it, then it would come back up before Roy Jean and the road commission to decide if we would possibly consider taking it back. Roy Jean, am I sort of kind of right, I mean, expectations, qualifications has to be met before we're going to accept it back into the road system?
If you wanted to put it back on the map, it's a central information program, you know, the actual loading power.
You know, so, you know, that's, I mean, and it's, y'all are dealing with a two-edged sword here, I, I get you, I mean, you know, we've got a farm, and I understand exactly where you're coming from on all the safety issues, because I've been there, so it is. And I also know that if I had property on a road like that, I would wish that I could make happy everybody and try to work out, because I'd like, you know, if I owned a piece of it, I would want it closed to the public myself, but that's me, that's not, I'm not speaking for anybody else. But also, you've got to be in agreement with that, then you've got to be agreement, I always go keep it up, you got to, you know, everybody's got to pull together and make it happen, and so there's a lot to go into that, but it's just, it's over our heads, I mean, you know, yeah.
I have one thing to say in this matter that's not being mentioned here, and in the past, it pointed to a road issue at one time, and now, which commission waters is not with the Michigan now, there was a road issue, everybody's been aggressive with it, and it was where property owners went further back off of Howard Road, I believe, and because those property owners were further back, they, time when the road list, they went from that road out, so they didn't include everyone, because there was a property owner that was trying to restrict the property owners in the back, and it's always an issue there, and this is a similar case.
Okay. Well, yeah.
I think Mr. Roll made a good point, if it's not been put back on the tax map, I mean.
You can't land it unless the river's there.
But the road.
The river, he, his property's across the river, they have to go through the river.
Right, but the part of the road that was shut down in forty.
Should be shut on the tax map.
It was put back on the tax map.
Exactly.
So it's still, I believe, if it went to court, then there'd be some kind of ruling that's still a road, it never was leaving back to nobody. It never, even though it come off the county road list, it still never relinquished back to a property owner and failed to be a road, if that makes sense to you.
I understand what you're saying, but if they took it over, they would have to go back in nineteen, and keep it up to standards, county standards, correct?
One other quick thing here, and I'll get out of your hair, I appreciate you listening to me. Then, Williams brought up the fact that there'd been a couple four-wheeler accidents down there, and we've got another couple here that live on that road, that's where it comes off of busted rock, and there is a lot of four-wheeler and traffic through there at excessive speeds and noise. Would you like to?
It's not uncommon for us to be awakened at three, four o'clock in the morning, dirt bikes, four-wheelers, I've tried to stop them, they come sliding to a stop to keep them hitting me. We have talked to the kids and the adults, it's both, and it's done no good.
Well, that's why I said, if it was me, I would want to keep it a private road, I wished every all of you's could come into some kind of agreement, because hey, I wouldn't want it.
I even been to the sheriff's department, and they assured me they would put on more patrol, since that, that was three weeks ago, I've seen one patrol car out, so that's not working.
No. But anyway, but, you know, I just, I don't know of anything, I mean, I don't know of anything we can do about.
The excessive traffic, excessive traffic is not just local traffic, about half of it is Georgia license.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it's coming on the five o'clock.
Right.
Our property's the only one there.
Yeah, yeah.
They're actually driving on your property with their vehicles.
There has been tire tracks at times on our property at all.
Our house has got no drainage down there, we're just trying to protect our tires.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I mean, you know.
The excessive speed and the dust, I can't keep cars clean, we can't keep the outside of the house clean, and the dust goes into the house, and that, that's a health issue. Something's got to be done.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, you know, there is some, definitely some problems that you do run into with having locked gates, even if everybody's in agreement, there is, if, if, if emergency is needing to get in there at any time for you, and he's not at home, and, and then, you know, some, anyway, there's just a lot of things that can happen. But if it was me as a property owner, I probably would take those chances, because I would want that road private myself, but that's me, so, you know, and I don't know who's going to win. Who's going to win, I want, and, you know, and we, we're not, you know, I mean, Judge Townsend, can you, do you not feel like this would be a, this is a civil matter, I mean, we're out, it's, it's out of our league, correct?
In the chance record.
Chance record, okay.
Well, no, I can't give you an illegality.
Right, but I mean.
But generally, these things are handled in chance record, but I don't know if you all can or cannot, that's up to you, or that's your.
Yeah, okay, but anyway, but that's, that's all the power we've got, is to either take the road back or not take the road back, correct, Greg, I mean, so to speak, I mean, Roy Jean and whoever.
Yeah, it's kind of a great, about the point he made about it not going back on the tax road.
Yeah.
But yes, it was abandoned, but since it's not been put back on the tax road, I don't see for any individual that own it, that still would make it a public road, because nobody owns it.
That's why we have researched exactly what you're saying, if it had ever been taken back to the county, but there's no taxes, I spent a long time here in the accessories' office, for a moment, trying to research and gain as much information as we can, her opinion, I'm just saying opinions, her opinion that it would still be a county-owned property road, but not maintained. Similar thing at the nine-one-one center, and they requested that it not be gated because of the multiple properties. The issues of all the motorbikes and stuff, the gate does not do anything to that, and if any commissioners want to visit the site, they could take you there, they've got four wheeler Jeep trails both sides of the road, so the gate can possibly stop some cars, and like I've told them before, if really they need to organize and talk with Sheriff Ross, there is a lot of Georgia four-wheelers and stuff coming up there, because before we bought a lot of these properties in there, they've pretty well been abandoned, because, that's what I'm saying, abandoned, not maintained, and everybody just had the run of them.
Yeah.
We have since gated them, and we actually have hired professional people to help monitor, and not to rest anybody or cause trouble, I was a kid myself one time, and I sure did like motorbikes.
Yeah, well, and that's.
We have to talk to them and stuff, you know, to respect their rights to sleep, and it is a very, very hard thing to do for a fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old to really understand Friday night or Saturday night that somebody's trying to sleep.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, I will try to, we will try to work this out together.
Yeah, a lot, I mean, you know, we, I definitely, I mean, I, I hope y'all can, because it, I mean, I know you've got a bad situation, and it, there's just different ways that you probably can handle it, and neither or, no way's going to be perfect, that's for sure.
That's correct.
Can I interject something, please? We have another issue too, that's not really discussed, and actually, I just thought about it, but there's an issue with four-one-one on that area too, because the very road that they're talking about, Parks Mill, Parks Mill.
Nine-one-one.
The nine-one-one issue, they made us change our address from the street that we live on to busted rock road, and I personally feel like that that could be detrimental to just about everybody out there with the streets not being consistent, and that's just something I.
Who led you change the?
Nine-one-one, when we moved in.
Also.
Because we live on the Parks Mill Road that they're talking about.
Are y'all living on busted rock?
No.
No.
We're on Parks Mill, we're the first house on Parks Mill.
Yep. And this is something that we have dealt with ever since we moved in.
Now, what did they tell you, what he told them? You actually have known?
We don't know it's too bad, that they needed to do that because of the safety of everyone down on that road, that it had to have one, one name, and that the fact that we're the one person on that road, that unless there's another reason that somebody should given us from the beginning, we have to carry the Parks Mill Road, one entity at that, and our address is three seventy-five busted rock road, so I would like to see that get corrected.
We can ask the nine-one-one addressing, we can ask the director of nine-one-one addressing to review y'all's address location.
Yeah, we've been there ten years though, and now, you know, everybody in the world knows us.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're still having an issue with it though, if you still have a desire to have it changed.
Yes.
We can ask the director to take another look at that.
I appreciate it.
What is the possibility of getting a sound ordinance? There is none in Polk County?
No, I doubt that's ever going to happen, that's just west of the Polk County.
They sometimes you don't move to Polk County if you want.
Four-wheelers.
That's pace and quiet, get it.
We usually, we don't let them over there.
My daddy grew up raving, I broke him, my son sitting back there, he broke his kid to break him, just, that's part of.
I took him to my truck, that part of it.
Nobody even fight nothing, yeah, but it made nobody even look fine.
They ruined the seat, they ruined the seat.
I was focused, well, I was a little bit, a little crass.
And also, I have a thing.
I ain't going to say nothing.
Are we really at the top of busted rock road, or Parks Mill Road? Are we supposed to carry the designation as being in floodplain?
We're a holy hill.
Yeah.
If you're in the floodplain map, I mean, if you're in that map, you have that designation, that's not, that's not us.
But is that?
What was that come up a year ago about that?
The floodplain first thing, and then the way they had it scheduled, was to say.
Who makes that ruling? Who is making?
If you don't mind, if you don't mind, student makes the rulings, and we need to get a what's called flood certified surveyor, because all surveyors are not certified to deal with the FEMA, and ask about having them do a elevation site, and then ask if they could do a map change. Surveyor typically costs you seven hundred to nine hundred dollars, and they might tell you, we can't do anything for you, here's your bill, so you can ask them to look at it first and give you an idea if they thought they could be successful in getting the change. But you need a certified, a surveyor who has, is FEMA certified to do their map change applications.
Well, is it true that if any part of a subdivision is in a floodplain, something like down at the river, then that makes the whole subdivision in floodplain?
I've never heard that before, I have heard that if any part of a lot is in the, as opposed to an entire subdivision, and that you, then you have to go get your elevation checked, and that may have just some other things, but.
Okay, thank you.
I must raise one question for her, I do have floodplain maps, your property is not in the floodplain, so I have actual surveys of where it's been mapped. That probably was, question came up when the property was subdivided, with the Pattersons for the lots, that part of it is in the floodplain, so, but I do have floodplain maps that might help you to show someone.
Okay, all right, well, good luck to everyone.
We'll agree.
Okay. Employee bonuses, Commissioner Brooks.
I'm going to put that off a month, but, no, I'm just.
I think I seen a bullet fly out his throat.
Go ahead and address it. You want to read the resolution?
No, I can't.
Resolution. You ask, you ask, you ask the budget.
Budget.
Resolution.
Okay. Our resolution of the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, to provide pay incentives, whereas the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee sees a need to improve working conditions to its employees and whereas the legislative body. Polk County is aware that it has not increased salary levels in the form of a pay raise in three years, but has relied on bonuses to help minimize increases in cost of living last year, and whereas is desired to give such a bonus this current year. Now therefore, it is to be resolved by the Polk County Commission meeting in a regular session at Polk County Courthouse, Pitt in Tennessee, on the twenty-first day of November two thousand and nineteen, that any full-time employees obtaining one year of consecutive work time are more employed as a, as of November the first, two thousand and nineteen, shall receive a bonus of one thousand. Any part-time employee with the same attributed time shall receive a bonus of five hundred. Any full-time employee who has worked less than one year of consecutive work time as November the first shall receive a bonus of five hundred, any part-time employees with the same time shall receive a bonus of two fifty. Any new hires from November the first, nineteen, through November twenty-first, nineteen, shall receive a bonus of two fifty.
Motion with proof of living in one of nineteen?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Give it a second. Well, there's one here, November first to the twenty-first, somebody just hired in, they get two hundred and fifty dollars. That, that don't seem like it'd be given to someone at short a time, that's not even a probationary time.
We discussed that same problem at Lent last year, we had several.
Well, you know, you're putting them on the same level as somebody that's been here a longer time.
Yeah.
We gave it last year to, I think, kind of partly because of having so many new hires and everybody going through such crisis of every, of the elected officials being new, the, the new hired help was new, uh, and everybody was really having to bust their butts to make things happen. And we felt like that, you know, it kind of compensated a little bit. Whereas this year, that's not really the same situation because we are in a little bit better shape than what we were last year about. All of our elected officials now have been in a year and so, I don't know, I mean, I do see the point and, but, you know, it's probably not gonna make or break us.
Fine, we just done it because we done it last year.
Yeah.
Let's say the phrase.
Right. One thing that we are going to do before this comes up again next year, we will be getting with the handbook committee and the rules and all this, we will have set bylaws that everyone will be going by. So if you quit one day before we, this whatever we deal, whatever we vote on to be in this handbook, then you've lost it regardless of your circumstances. Or if you're not hired, what, what, anyway, we're gonna have it, it's gonna be in black and white. So this is not, we don't put this pressure on us every year and then gonna make somebody mad.
Or we may be looking at proration of the year by the month served.
Yeah.
Because the bonuses are actually for the year you just completed.
Yeah.
I want to modify my motion. I wanted to make a motion to approve 11-119 and striking any new hires from November 1st, 2019 through November 21st, 2019, shall receive a bonus of 250.
So you're gonna take that out?
Yeah.
That's the way you want it?
That's, that's my motion now. But it goes or not.
I'll send it.
Motion by John, second by Samantha. Any discussion on that end of it?
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponos.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Okay, surplus items, Road Department. Where's that? Here we go.
Here you go.
Thank y'all.
I'm gonna present budget amendment number 12. This is on 131, oh, I'm sorry, 101. Budget amendment number 12. Proposed source of funds, undesignated fund balance in the amount of $96,750.
That amount will change.
Of course it did.
And I mean, just now they have the motion to change the resolution. I'll have to read that.
It'd be 90, same as earlier before you had it those back in? Be 95,250.
You'll take off 750, I believe.
96,000. Because you take three new hires.
It'll be less and not more, so if you're not passing as it is, you'll pass it.
If you pass it as it is, it'll go, right?
Right.
All right. The budget amendment itself, 101, 39,000, undesignated fund balance for $96,750. Going into proposed expenditure of funds, line 56,300, 188, 52,100, 188, 51,300, 188, 51,800, 188, 59, I'm sorry, 55,900, 188, 55,190, 188, 51,600, 188, 52,400, 188, 52,300, 188, 52,500, 188, 53,100, 188, 53,400, 188, 54,110, 188, 54,300, 188, 51,500, 188, 53,500, 188, 58,300, 188. Everybody's keeping up with this, right?
Yes, we are.
57,200, I'm sorry, 57,20, now 55,720, 188, 56,500, 188, 57,100, dash, 188. And any that I happened to miss on the reading that's on this paper. And the amount of, what was it, $96,750? Because we're staying with what it says. The difference in the two amounts is zero. And this was from you, Catrice. I didn't see the signature. This is from your budget amendment request, correct?
Correct.
Yes. And that's budget number 101, uh, number 12. I make a motion. Budget amendment number 12.
Motion by Pippinger, second by Samantha. Any more discussion?
What's the sanitation on that? What is this?
It's Austin.
He, he's paid out that sanitation grant fund.
Litigant grant.
Litigant grant.
It's not the most...
Any more discussion?
One thing, Catrice, we, you, you did catch some water at, at the prorated amount. We don't pay all their salaries, so their, their bonus was prorated just like last year. So those four employees under that, it's prorated.
Can you explain to me again why the road workers are not county employees?
Because they're under 131, we don't have the power to set their salaries. They're not under salary pay scale.
It's under 101. They paid that much more than our regular employees?
I'm, I'm sure they wouldn't come to work every day if they were paid on 101 scale.
Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponos.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kimsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Okay, now, surplus items, Road Department.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
We need to read these out?
No, you don't have to read them off. You made a motion that's approval mass presented, Mr. D.
Yeah. Got a motion by Dewey and, oh, Pippinger, second.
Um, Evans, Evans, seconded down over here.
Okay, okay. We can't hear from one end this type to the other. Any more discussion? All right, roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Dill. Dewey Esponos.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Building grounds, county executive.
You all look in your packets, we turned out a lot of RFPs this month. The first one I'm gonna take up is with the Health Department that was turned back in by H.L. Construction. That was the only bid that did come into the Health Department for sewer line repair. And if you recall, they're gonna let, the Health Department's gonna let the county use the money that we usually pay them, that's gonna go into this repair. Since the last time this was took up, road route has been earned twice, so it is something that really needs done. The request is for the removal and installation of approximately 154 HPVCP pipe inside the building and approximately 200 feet outside the building. H.L. Construction says that for the 150 foot of interior work will be priced at $115.82 per foot, consisting of encapsulating the work area, cut the concrete floor, remove concrete, dig and install a new sewer line with proper fall, bed gravel, pour concrete back, and concrete to be a slick finish. 200 foot outside is at $39.40 a foot and all pipes to be bedded into rock. So, and if it comes up that they don't have to go 200 foot to catch the fall outside, it'll only be at the $39.40 a foot. If it does go just a little farther, that's kind of that unknown because we don't know how far it's gonna go until we actually catch that, but we've gotta lower it outside as well as inside.
So what was our projected total?
I'll use the last get going. Just one second. I think it fell within 26, I read it, $26,000. Hold on.
And that's, that is within what they are gonna let us use of their money, right?
Yes, that's within the $42,000, but they price it in such a way just because if it does go over a few feet or if it's under a few feet, but it still does and it will reach within that, that guideline.
I make a motion to award the Health Department bid to H&amp;L Construction. That was the only bidder you had in this.
Motion by Pippinger, second by Mark. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponos.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
The next in your packet was the RFP for the Copper Basin Medical Center to get the meters installed and into the buildings that are there. H&amp;L Construction was also the only bidder that turned in on that. For this bid, the new water lines are the purpose of A, B, and C, A, B, C, and D building. There's two lines that are 855 feet, that's for building C and D. One line is 1,020 foot and one line's approximately 1,200 foot. So this is with quarter turn cutoff valves to be installed every 250 feet for easy accessibility and the purpose to tie into the new meter that exists now at the backside of the side of the building. So their material price is $2,095, labor is $17,520, fuel 400, and OP 4,000 for a total of materials, labors above the scope of the work of $26,660. There is still money in the $50,000 grant that we received for the hospital closure, so we will expurse all of that. That was what that grant was written for, was to get these buildings on their own water lines as well as cleaning up the material, the records that was within the hospital. So, and that was the only bid submitted.
Is there enough there to cover this total?
There should be. But as well, like I said, we're still, we have those x-rays that are gonna be picked up, they're gonna be because of the silver that's in them, so that shouldn't be that much more. And they're, this should cover it. It should be covered underneath that grant. We will expurse that grant first before we have to take any county money out.
And the town responsible for a quarter?
No, this is, this is through the grant.
I thought like if it's over the...
If it's over, yes, then it would fall back into our agreement, but as long as it's within the scope of the grant, that's what it will be used for.
We got two thirds actually. Twenty-six.
And that was H&amp;L Construction.
Yes, sir.
Is the only bidder.
Yes, sir.
Think we're able to take the water line underground now?
Takes. Oh, yes.
Do any of the commissioners from District 3 see a, a issue with this?
Being a problem, no.
So we saw the grant money?
It should fall within the amount of the grant money.
Okay, I make the motion.
Motion by Samantha.
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponos.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Also on the buildings and grounds committee, our RFPs are out for the show barn grant that to get the roof put onto it. Did you all know we met there the other day? I did do as the committee asked, Lowe's will not let you put anything up on the board, but I did talk to a lot of the people that work there. We've already had two, three people that's called in, so they're, they're looking at that. Also, as you all noted, the, the concrete on the outside, we're not gonna take that up right now. Then as well, we're gonna kind of wait towards until the end of the year and see about the, the bathroom situation, try to get some of those to look about to be ADA compliant and we're all, are a little better.
Okay, did you have, did you have bids come in on the show barn that we've not addressed?
No.
Okay, so the only things come in is what's been addressed.
Correct. The bids for the show barn are, will stay out until January the 6th, and so they will be brought back up in the January meeting. They'll be in your packets, any of those that we do receive.
And I said, we'll enter timeframe to get it rolling.
So, letting in everybody you know, anybody that does any type of construction work. We did take the LED lights off, the lighting out of that to see if we can just get the top on to the barn.
But they can't be at either way, right?
Well, we, we took it out just to see if we could drive that price down some more. Because some of them were telling me that that was, what was causing them to go up so much was because of LED pricing. But if you remember here in the courthouse, we changed these LED bulbs out to $5 bulbs, so I couldn't say let the contractor charge us 30 or 40 dollars when, when I know that we could get them a lot cheaper ourselves. So if we just get the top on to it, then we will go from there as far as getting the lights. That's it on the sanitation part. Next, the following buildings around, or sanitation, I'm sorry, the buildings around. Do we do sanitation? Yeah. On sanitation, which is the next item. We turned out RFPs for the buildings. Uh, Sand Tech turned in for their four buildings that are sitting at your sites right now. A total price of $15,900 for those buildings that are there. H&amp;L Construction, they bid two different ways. They bid with just a hull, at an eight-by-eight building of $2,240. Then they turned in a bid for $3,840 for that building to be wired, insulated with 110 outlets and to have a, uh, three-foot door with three windows on each side. The Minnetonka Community, Community Mini Barns of Endelno also turned in a bid. Their bids, of course, were for a hull. I think everybody knows they don't do the wiring. So they turned in bids two different ways on an eight-by-eight building. Benton was $1,726, and I'll be sure to get this to newspapers, so that way you don't have to try to... But for Benton, $1,726, Reliant, $1,726, Delo, $1,714, Old Fork, $1,752, Farner and Coffer Hill, $1,806 apiece. But they said that if they were awarded each, i- if they were awarded every building to do, that they would do every building for $10,198. That is them to build it and to deliver it. The committee also asked the possibility of getting somebody to finish these and to, to have that done. We are gonna be within the scope of the less than $5,000, which is within my power to execute that. And I've also talked with the Minnetonka, so if you do award the lowest price, which is the Minnetonka Mini Barns, they will agree to get everything done and have it all done on their site. And then I will have somebody to go and to wire those in, that is a licensed electrician. And then as well to wire these buildings up whenever they go onto site for under the $5,000 amount that I have the authority of.
Does all of the buildings that we presently have, are they all wired?
Yes.
Yeah.
But you only had the buildings for the east side of the county, or the west side of the county turned in. East side, they did not turn a bid in for those buildings that sit there. And as well, I encourage you to go look at those buildings. One over in Lenzdale looks like it's been through four or five days of bad. It's been run over and it's pretty rough.
So we're gonna slide it on into the compact?
Yeah, that, that, they would be cheaper than to move these buildings out.
Yeah, that was...
Were you trying to wrap those, that's what you're...
But they wanted $3,975 for those buildings that are sitting on the, on the west side of the county.
How much do you say on the Minnetonka's total, if they got them all?
If the Minnetonka's build every, all six, delivered to all six sites, is $10,198.
Well, that bid, the building's for sale, so it was on site.
Do I know?
The building's there now, with Sand Tech.
$3,975 for four buildings, a total cost of $15,900 for the four buildings on the west side of the county. Advanced disposal on the east side, they did not, they didn't turn a bid in for their building. So in a nutshell, the, the Minnetonka Community, sixteen thou, or 1,699.66 per building as a whole. And then we can come in, have somebody to do all the rest of it for less than the $5,000 limit.
So what do you need?
Which one y'all wanna go with? You wanna let them build, you wanna award the buildings to the Minnetonka Community, which was the cheapest and then let me have the authority to get, get them wired in and when they set up, they're done? Or if you want H.L. Construction to have the buildings, they will do the, the wire-in, built to specs, they're $3,840 per building.
But you feel like that we can, uh, if we go local and we hire local people to then come back in to these Minnetonka buildings and, and finish them up, you still feel like we'll be just a little bit under budget than what we will with this H&amp;L Construction?
Yes, ma'am. H&amp;L Construction, you're $23,040.
You'll be about 16.
Yeah, with the Minnetonka community, you're, you're $10,198. And even with a 5,000 bid limit, that's 15, so you're still 8,000.
Cheaper.
Cheaper.
I make a motion to award the, uh, bid at the Minnetonka Community. The Minnetonka should come back and install?
I, I can get, and give Robbie the authority to, go up to 5,000 mark that's under his purview anyway, to get it finished.
All right, we've got a motion by Pippinger, second, by Samantha, to go with the Minnetonka's and Robbie the authority to get them finished out. Any more discussion?
What size building?
Eight-by-eights. That's what's currently there.
On each location, they'll be all eight by eight?
Yes, every location will be an eight by eight. Metal roof, metal sides. I'll even try to get them color-coded, because I know the basing areas are silver and red. We're red and white, so I'll, I'll try my best to make them look like green. And they'll be random.
Are they, uh, eight by eight, are they any reason to have three windows in it?
Yes, because you don't know exactly and how those are gonna sit. And so if you have a, if you have the three windows, if you're like Benton, for instance, you'd set the air conditioning unit in the back and you would have the building windows on the left and the right side. Lenzdale, for instance, if it was sitting a certain way, you may have it where you'd look opposite of it. Farner is the same way. You wanna see your people coming in, you'd look left to right so you could watch. In case they came in one way or the other, you, you'd wanna be able to see them.
Well, you're supposed to be out there manning the station, aren't you, instead of sitting in there waiting on somebody to come up?
Yeah, that helps, but lots of times I ain't.
It's outside, really. Listen, rain or snow. They haven't stayed out there in the rain and snow, but they're gonna be running in and out all the time.
Like I said, you've also gotta think, you've got, you've got all different things. And so, and they won't, and they're gonna start to be county employees, so. If you wanna tell them those concerns that you have, once they are county employees, then that's something we'll address. But you've gotta provide adequate shelter for them to be in too.
I think James got a good point, I'll deal, we just ain't got time to. Because it's the time sensitivity, we ain't got time to go back and redo these bids for two winters, it's a third.
I mean, do these Minnetonka, do they need flaggers, traffic flaggers coming up the river with that building on the back of the wagon?
Yeah, I was getting ready to, but, and I was gonna suggest, Jeremy, that you've carried a flag.
I was, I was, yeah, I mean, that's what I was...
That was what we was...
I was gonna let them know they got the bid, but can't y'all read it?
I smoked, smoked sickness and pigeons.
I mean, I seen them hauling the goats and stuff, you know, the cows there, but I was wondering about the...
Yeah, I write that, it's like, God comes with a rope, I, we're good on that. I goes, I done that just so you wouldn't have to ride on that, what? You was gonna say, hey, can you fly?
You already have your barbecue.
Okay, all right, here we go.
We're ready. Any more discussion?
I guess Samantha's second.
Samantha.
Samantha's second. Motion's second.
All right, roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponoz. Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tranthen.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
If you, one other thing on sanitation, I passed out the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury. Just to let you know that that letter has been passed out, that is for our loan amount of 325,000. That's been approved. We should be getting our funds tomorrow, so that way we can move forward with Baker's Waste to get that done. Also, we'd had a concern to come up, as I addressed the committee. Uh, an issue at the Grassy Creek Dump Site, and we will be turning out RFPs Monday. Now, anybody that... We need to set up a day for a special call meeting when these RFPs come back, because we are, like Greg said, time sensitive. And so this will be for the purpose of, oh, the approval of the RFP to come out for the Grassy Creek Dump Site work that needs to be done for the pre-crusher compact.
No, I have the commission.
Call commission.
Oh, we'll have to establish a whole deal.
And the committee had looked at setting at the third. The first Tuesday in the month of December. And that would be on the east side at the committee's.
What is the issue with it?
As I addressed with the committee, um, there's an issue with water runoff. There's gotta be a pad prepped. There's a head wall that is insufficient to sustain. So there are some issues that need to be addressed to be able to get the trucks in and out and put $60,000 worth of equipment underwater, so. Of course, the salesman said it'll go.
Yeah, he said it would go.
Yes, he did. I, I heard that you also got verification of that. But then whenever their engineers or builders came out and looked, uh, they came out one day whenever it was raining. And I don't think that we ought to start and put brand-new equipment sitting underneath water. And I know it's gonna cost a little bit of money, but it's gonna be done right. And the head wall, if you go up to Grassy Creek and look, there's a V shape in between the head wall where there's a void and a four-inch piece of pipe that's supposed to carry all the runoff water. And, and it's washed all that out, and it's compromised integrity. And turning that, turning that quick's the only way I know to do it. Anybody's got any other suggestions, I greatly appreciate it.
You, you wanna call it maybe, or is that gonna be?
Yeah.
You can do it.
Okay. So what day did you?
The third, if we have that on the third, first Tuesday of December.
December.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, December the third. At six or seven?
Seven, I'd say at seven, that's...
Seven, okay. Seven o'clock? Above the mountains, community center.
That'd be a vote and meet. But sanitation meeting, it needs to meet before it's looked to be.
Yeah, y'all want to, it's, it's totally up to that committee.
What time, Mark? Chairman? Somebody's in on? The third?
Tuesday the third, yes.
On Tuesday, Tuesday at 5:00. About six or six thirty? Whenever, whenever they... Six thirty?
And what day is that?
Sunday.
Oh, Sunday. It's before making, okay, got you. All righty. Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Uh, we've done the sanitation committee thing, right? Okay, uh, the industrial development boards that we're at?
Yes, ma'am. IED Board, um, we've been taking application, or appointments, applications, if you would, for that. I presented those applications back to you in your packet. This is a nine-person board, and the nine people that I presented to you are the ones that I'd like to ask you to put on and to start this IED Board.
Do you have the resumes?
I have the resumes that I asked for, but there was not anything asked for in this. So, on the county webpage, this was what was asked for. So that was one that I only done this. I, I asked, I personally asked for the resumes. The county, this is what's on our webpage. Greg, go on.
Yes. If that's still the same, that I had to look at, yeah, that's one of the, the application for the committees.
Yes.
Have you given any thoughts to, uh, represented from the volunteer electorate?
It was up to the people to turn in for this. And I put plenty of word out, as well as it's been in all of our papers, that we've got out. So I know I've talked to a lot of different people myself.
It'd be very important to have them, as well as Ocoi Utilities and probably CSX Railroad.
Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but it has to be a member or a constituent in the county and they have to be a voting person and live in this county, correct?
It is, they're resident.
Resident.
They wouldn't have to be a voting person on that, but representing volunteer electorate as well as Ocoi Utilities. These are things that would be concerned with any industrial relations.
Correct. And so that's what this board's, wanna be sure that they get done. Because like I said, for these people, they have to be residents of the county. And then they can reach out whenever they start this to those people that are in the industry that, that you just described.
What is the breakdown of how long this serves?
Eric, got the logistics, I guess you could say, or the, they're all different, they're staggered out, once they get there.
Well, yeah, it's, it depends, the whole board, they're, they're not supposed to all come in at the same time. So they're, you're supposed to be two, four, and six, and then after the first time, it's six, six years each after that.
And they get the spell and then no matter what they do?
Well, you, I mean, after the term ends, you can, you reappoint them or put somebody else on.
I mean, what if they're on there and they're not doing what the places that, can we get rid of them? Can we replace them?
Uh, I mean, there, I guess depends on what the, there might be possibilities, I don't, depends on what it is they were doing, I suppose.
Would that not go back in on their bylaws that they adopt?
Yeah, they, they have their own, their own, they're, they're their own, like the nonprofit corporations, so they have their own set of, uh, they're, they're on board, they're, they're separate.
Have you interviewed each one of these?
I have personally talked to each, let me briefly, yes. I can't say that I have talked to each and every one of those throughout our community, whether it's been that they've come up to me after they've turned in their application, came into my office, sat down, called, went to farms, went to businesses. One was a phone conversation, but I, I've been to his business before.
Are any of them here tonight?
Yes, I see one.
But personally, I don't know most of these, and I don't have enough information to make a rational decision.
Did you call any of them?
No. Who have you got listed down for your, which one are you, I'm assuming three, you recommend three for the two-year term?
Yes, I would, I mean, I would, the, the two-year term?
Yes, who, who's your three only, if you recommend?
Kenneth Bishop, Tim Jones, and Mark Allen.
My county that's on the school board?
I assume so.
That's Mark Wayne?
No, I'm...
I think he was years ago.
Well, the only problem with that is they're all three down here.
You said Tim Jones?
It's a district, yes, a district one, a district two, and a district three.
You don't have districts.
Who are you asking?
On the three-year term?
Who are you asking on the, the four-year?
David Darden, Derek Sloan, and Tim Kellman.
Do you like him?
I like him. He's the one that I have been to his business that he has.
He did the big key, all spilt.
He is from District Three.
He done it, he cleaned it up. No, he cleaned it up.
David Darden, Derek Sloan, Tim Kellman.
No, he cleaned it up.
And who's for your six-year?
Sherry Kipso. Alan Heinz.
What's the term on that?
Fifty-six-year.
And Ricky Bruce.
Uh, okay, question. Who is going to have the authority? If we, okay, let's say this is nine members. Okay, let's say that we get six members that's coming to us, or whoever, to you, whatever, saying, "Look, we don't like Sally Ann here. She doesn't seem to be working with nothing that we've, the rest of us has got going on." Who's gonna have the authority to get... Who's going to have the authority to get rid of Sally Ann?
It would be in their bylaws that they would have to, have to be adopted.
And as far as they're not liking what she does, with our majority vote, just like us.
You've got a nine-person committee.
Because, I mean, I, you know, I'm not saying it could be a problem, but I'm saying I could see how it could be a problem. You know? So, you know, you've got one duck in the river that ain't swimming the same way. It just, you know.
And if there's somebody there, you know, and if you all want to...
But now, we will have no authority over them once they establish a board.
Correct. But you will work with them.
The authority we'll have is reappoint them when their term's up.
But if you all want to, I mean, and if you don't, if you just want to turn the terms and the years around, that's fine. That's the, that's the nine people. And if there's eight of them that you want to set forth tonight, six, three, two, that's fine. All I ask is, is give me 60 days to turn out some more, to bring more back to you in the January meeting.
You that are from the third district, y'all know this. These people from the third.
That was the one Samantha?
Samantha.
Yes, Tim was the one Samantha we were just talking about. He's got a big business up there where he takes, brings in, like Highlives, things of that nature up at Industrial Park.
And one thing, if you, you wanted to talk to them, you don't have to vote on them today. You don't have to wait until next month. We're asking if anyone else is interested in applying, but there are no requirements as far as how many in each district or anything like that.
I'm not against any of them, it's just something, especially the ones in the third district, I've never heard. It was under the first.
Hold on a minute, we're going to try to rejiggle a little bit right here and see. There was Mark Allen.
I don't know before some of y'all that's been here, that we had more turn in for this than we had positions to afford. So that's how come you all see the nine? That way, there was no confusion with.
We're about to roll with, we've got nineteen minutes.
Yeah.
For y'all's sake, we've got a two-hour time left on the meetings. Sure y'all be glad to hear that. We're canceled.
Actually, we have learned a lot.
Yeah. So you may.
I'll make most of these remember when they...
Hang on a second.
Ask for Lenny. I'll say.
Check me twice. Do what's in place. I don't know. Put your number ten. Damn, that's coming to you. That's not...
Yes, that's, that's fine. I don't have a problem with you all changing the year of service, that's, that's fine.
But now, we've already got a motion.
Correct, you do have a motion.
Well, I'm in my, well, I say that Mark.
All right. We want to, what we want to do, withdraw that and start all over, or what?
That's, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, cause Mark's...
What's the problem?
That was just a little shuffling on the people for the years.
When they bought the years, I said people.
Oh, you just made a motion for the, the recommendations, right?
Yeah, the recommendations that...
I'm in it to change the years.
Okay, so where we at?
Don't agree, say that.
I'll say Mark new motion.
Okay. Read it off. We've got her.
This is the, this is the recommended years, this is correct. This is your recommended years now after discussion. Cheryl.
Sherry Kepsel.
Sherry Kepsel, Mark Allen, and Tim Jones for a two-year term, David Darden, Derek Sloan, and Ken Bishop for a four-year term, and Tim Kayler, Alan Haynes, and Ricky Brooks for a six-year term.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponon.
Pass.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
No.
Okay, address issues.
That's you.
I think.
That's you.
Okay. Resolution of the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee requesting change to postal routes in Polk County. Whereas the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee has a responsibility to identify and recommend solutions to the problems that arise in Polk County. And where the legislative body of Polk County understands that addressing some businesses, residential dwellings in the county are misleading and a financial burden, burden on business advertising, package deliveries can cause trouble with dispatching emergency calls. And whereas traveling via GPS locations slash location maps slash systems, collecting addresses, obtaining phone numbers for businesses through directory assistance are problematic in the city if used as an indicator for search because of the location designation from the United Postal Service. And whereas the Polk County 911 Emergency Communications District Director advises that change in the address, city designations would be beneficial to their system. Now, therefore, it is to be resolved by the Polk County Commission meeting in the regular session of this 21st day of November, 2019, Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee, that a request is being made to the Postmaster of Cleveland, Tennessee unit and the Postmaster of Benton, Tennessee unit and the United States Postal Service to redesignate the section of US Highway 411 in SR 033 in Polk County between the intersections of York Road and Mole Road as a Benton mailing route. Any of y'all that are not real familiar with where this is at, it's going south on 411. Oakwood Tire is the last building to York, to York Road that has a Benton mailing address. The building right next to Oakwood Tire starts the Cleveland address. Ken's Casuals, any of Ken's rental businesses, the ambulance service, all that, and then two or three residents down through there, to York Road has a Cleveland address. As we all know, Highway 411 does not even touch Bradley County.
Neither does Oakwood River.
And neither does the Oakwood River that they want to watch.
No, basically, but anyway.
And this is just one more part of Polk County that Bradley County is claiming. There is also could be, now this, it might not have been going on, we don't know. When Gina's back in her office Monday, I'm going to ask her to check on that far as. It's possible that sales tax off of those build, off of those businesses has not even been coming to us. Now, we don't know.
They say it's a mailing address.
Yeah.
And they could possibly.
Because it, it does work off a location ID, but I don't know now, that, that's just, don't know that, but it is possible. But...
They could have been saying to all those businesses, "Sales tax Bradley County for 20 years."
Yeah. So, and now, it has, it comes to light that whenever these businesses are trying to get packages delivered to them, half the time they're going back to the Cleveland post office, and they're not even giving them. They're making the people come down there and pick them up. So this is, it is, it's a very bad inconvenience. Wes Davis said it's a nightmare for 911. And it's just not right. And any, whatever your circumstances are, it's not right for that to hail a Cleveland address because it does not bumper into Cleveland. If this was on 64, it would be a tinky bit different because, you know, you bumper in, just like it is in Delano and a few places, but 411 don't bumper in to Cleveland period. So I don't get it. I don't, I don't even, it stemmed from years ago, our mailman actually, I think, complaining because it went over his mileage. I'm not for sure now, I just kind of heard that through the grapevine. But whatever the situation is, this would give us, if this is posed, then this would give us the authority to start this in motion, correct, John Hoyt? I mean, this, we would mail this to the Postmaster General in Cleveland. And then he will either have, he will either can pass it for it to go on a step further with his carrier, which they could, I think, in return protest it. But this starts the ball rolling to see if, if we can get this back.
Have you talked to, have you had any input from either postmaster?
Just our, just our postmaster.
Shouldn't it be up to our postmasters?
You would think, but he, I talked to him, and he wants it back. But he said he has to turn it loose.
So we've got a postmaster in Bradley County making a decision for, on our mail routing to Polk County.
Yeah.
Up to him.
Yeah. That's just...
Why they go over there?
Yeah.
This all come up six, seven years ago. What'd y'all do then?
I think it did, but it was over some, a different issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, same thing with about the ambulance service and all that, going Cleveland address, and it come up for a commission.
Well, it's come up again.
I don't think we did a resolution on it last night.
We didn't have a resolution, and everything we put in, filed a plea with.
Yeah.
So it's a failed, like, getting this one.
So...
To see, Bill, you got a motion right here.
I'll push it.
I make the motion to approve the Resolution 11-2, 19.
She brought her teachers.
Uh, Pippinger made the motion, Samantha seconded. We got any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponon.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kimsey.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Okay, and census proclamation and information county executive.
Real quick, Robin Monroe Brothers, who is our census worker, is not going to be with us tonight. Her son was in, or is in the emergency room. But the census is coming up, and it's a very important thing for everybody to kind of understand, and there's some numbers, and I'll run them real quick. For every person that's not counted, the trickle-down effect that we feel is $1,091 per person per year. So if you take a six-year-old child that was not counted in the last census, and he is not counted in this census, that 16-year-old child will cost us $17,456 in average. So it's very important that this census and that we make sure everybody gets counted. The proclamation that's in your packet, which I'm going to sign tonight, there's going to be a count board meeting here on Monday, in which the lady from the census will be here. I encourage any and all leaders to be a part. I personally have mailed letters out to all the area churches to express for the pastors to come out. And you may say, well, we don't need, we've got to have people that are in those communities that people trust to get these counts. It does not matter if they're here legally, illegally, they use our road system. Anything that is used, these people need to be counted. And it's, it's very important. So you just help to get the word out. I appreciate the Polk County News for putting a little article out and trying to get the word. But be sure, if you can at all, come here on Monday, I think it's at six. I think that's whenever the count board meeting is. And, you know, we're going to try to get that set up. It's going to be really informal, but also going to start some of the training. So if you just want to kind of come and sit and ask a question, or if you want to be on that actual count board, be sure to get with us as we move forward to get this done. And encourage everybody to get counted.
I've been spying. Third census on the commission. And what I've found over the years, the reason we can't increase and grow, because every time a baby's born, somebody leaves a tank. So...
Hopefully, we're all coming then.
I would flag.
Hopefully, we're all coming.
Yeah, we got people on there.
So...
Could you say that one more time before I get that recorded?
I'll, I'll, I can see you call.
I'd like to say one thing on the, are we on announcements?
Yeah, on announcements.
I'd like to say one thing on these bonuses. Commissioner Brooks has worked for a couple of weeks on these, on these employee bonuses.
I didn't work, I lobbied.
Well, lobbied Brooks. Well, I was going to say, we were up here and looking at some numbers, and I'll be honest with you, I hadn't decided until today. And Director of Council Budgets found some designated restricted revenue that can be freed up. And that made a difference with my vote, but she, she went to work for the employees to make sure that every line was looked at and make it happen. So between Brooks and Catrice, that's the...
And John Hoyt, he never takes credit.
John Hoyt ain't done much.
Exactly.
I stayed neutral.
Catrice, John Hoyt, and Greg all worked. They, they went after this and tried to make it all happen. And so, we're grateful.
Commissioner Trantham pointed something out. The agreement that was passed out to you all as well, that is the agreement with universal ways for it to be looked at, it will be voted on next month. So take those home, look at them. If you have any recommendations, if you remember you as a commission granted me the authority to enter in to talk with universal ways to get an agreement between them. The one, the other one that we had, Eric will tell you, it was subpar, to say the least. It was very, very, very vague. So this is going to try to put some teeth in to our providers, make sure they're staying at 80% full. So that's some of those things, as Commissioner Trantham asked, so read over that. That will be on your agenda next month to be voted on. And we can also take it up with the sanitation committee before it's...
All righty.
Motion to adjourn. Chairman.
Yes.
Real quick, I gave everybody a copy of, everybody, a year there, I'm supposed to give you a copy of it.
Yeah.
It's just your, yours and I'll make it in the post office. Give you a copy.
Thank you.
We were talking about the postmaster, and said, "What about the post office in Oakwood? Is it going to open?"
At least I heard it wasn't.
Yeah.
I stopped by, but said it wasn't up to whatever the, whatever code was.
They moved real quick about getting it in, but that's about even. The whole time, what's that paid on Fire Hall in Oakwood? I get asked about it a lot.
I do as well. There is some grant money out according to Mr. House. I have talked with Chief Law, trying to get some of the money up. It's my understanding that they spent...
We were talking about the postmaster, and said, what about the post office in Oakwood? Is it going to open?
Last I heard, it wasn't.
Yeah, last I, I would say it wasn't up to whatever the, whatever code was.
They moved real quick about getting it in, but that's about it. And all the time, what's up, they don't fire haul in Oakwood. I get asked about it a lot.
I do as well. There is some grant money out, according to Mr. House, I have talked with Chief Law and trying to get some of the money up. It's my understanding that they spent the amount of money that they had on that building and got it where they got it, and then they run out of funds. So I don't know anything outside of that, but I have talked with Representative House on trying to get that, and see if there's something else there to finish that fire haul in Oakwood. That's what I do as well, I've been.
It's been, well, this month makes three years, November sixteenth, one tornado hit in three years, today, the flood. I remember the tornado hit, and the bus wrecked in Chattanooga, and Gatlinburg catching on fire, all having been by.
Yeah, I made a motion to adjourn.